All right, it is 4:30 on May 1. Happy May Day to all of you. Welcome to those as guests here. And I'd like to begin by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand if you're able.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have a roll call, please.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Sean Brewster.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
All right. And we have the agenda here before us. Is everything on here? Okay, as presented, any entertaining motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right. Okay, we have an opportunity for your public comments now. Is there anyone here now that would like to make public comments? If so, step up to the mic. If not, we'll move forward with the consent agenda. Any questions? Not, we'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Okay. Moving forward now into old business, I'd like to begin a discussion about the Mid-American Gas and Electric franchises, continuing from where we left off last, at our last meeting. Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I jump in with a comment, please?
Sure.
Kyle, is your Kyle? No?
Brett.
Brett, is Kyle here? Anyway, thanks to Kyle for stepping up and volunteering for the fire department.
Yes.
That's all I've got.
Okay, go ahead, Sam. For yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in my rather lengthy report on this, a lot of the wording hasn't changed. It's been updated a bit, but the main thing is the several options that I laid out at the beginning. Mark Rinders is unable to attend tonight, and Micah, our city attorney, isn't here at this time. But either way, we have three options to present to you. One is to continue or table the ordinances and revenue purpose statement, and either set the hearing for sometime in June, or do not set the hearing at this time. Three key elements, several key elements are needed before the ordinances are ready. City attorney's review of the wording is ongoing. Minor changes are being worked out between us and Mid-American, mainly relating to right-of-way access. B, the fee for residential needs to be put in the ordinance drafts. Remember, all residential accounts are paying 1% now for local options, so at most, the net gain would be a four-fold increase, or 4%. The other factor is the percentage fee for non-residential needs to be determined. The second thing, the second option you could do is to approve the revenue purpose statement now, and table the rest until the ordinance review is complete. After that time, the ordinances can be put back on the agenda for a policy discussion by the council as to what the percentages should be for the fees. You could also set the hearing today for May 15, but before you did that, you would have to approve the revenue purpose statement, because the revenue purpose statement needs to be published prior to the hearing. There are several tangents on those recommendations, but that's the summary.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Where are you at with all of this, gentlemen? Tom, you've done a lot of work with the fee schedule, I think, correct?
Yeah, I think we're getting closer. I know, I guess I feel we're getting much closer, I'm getting much closer, on this. We do have some revenue considerations that just came up in regards to some of the current exemptions that are out there as far as local option, sales tax considerations, that I'd like to review a little bit more, along with that, too, the scope of the revenue statement. I think a little more work could be done on that yet, too, and I think there's some discussion yet on whether it's tight enough, or it's too loose, whichever you want, however you want to put it, but I think most of all, we've got a, we've got a public referendum that's coming up here at the end of the month with the special election, and I'd kind of like to, I'd like to think that we could have a full council before we do any action on this, and allow them an opportunity to participate in the process as well. We know that it's a topic of discussion in the community, and I think the community needs to have their voice fully represented through a full council. So, I would, at this point, I guess I would make motion that we continue the table on this, and bring this up after the special election.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I would agree with Tom on that. I think that would, everyone would appreciate slowing this down a little bit until we get through that special election and have some more input on it, so I think that's a good thought. I would second that.
Okay. Sean or Brad, any additional comments?
I would also agree that way, then. Everybody on the council's an elected official. And the only thing I have on the revenue purpose statement is, I would like to see that when it talks about local option, sales tax, it should be, I'd like to see the 1% in there, 37.5% of the 1%, I think it'd make it read a little clearer.
Okay. Sean, anything else?
No, I'm good with tabling it.
I'm going to take it one step further, Tom, in what you were talking about, in terms of, and just throw this idea out there. What if we were to, I mean, in all reality, I think we all realize there's a real possibility that this thing could be turned, do a reverse referendum, just like we had with the mayoral appointment. What if we be proactive and just decide, we're going to put it to a vote first? Get it out there, continue the discussion, not have a special election, but put it on the ballot in November when we're having the general election? And then, that becomes our timetable. We work backwards from there, and see what, do it, give it our due diligence. I think this is a good way to go. I want to go on record as saying that. I believe in the franchise fee, I think is a good equitable way of raising those funds that we need. But that's, that's how I think. I don't, and I think everybody should have an opportunity to weigh in on this.
Yeah, and I think that would give us time to clarify some things and have some more open discussions on it. I would tend to agree with that.
I'm just throwing that out there now, so, you know, weigh in, but if, if we decide to go that route, then we can work backwards from there. I mean, that would have to be on the ballot in, or on, to the recorder's office in September.
September 20.
So, we've got between now and then to discuss, promote, educate, whatever the case may be.
I guess I would add, I believe this is a fundamental step forward in our future revenue, and I think a referendum from the community is absolutely needed in this. So I guess I would, however, I need to reformulate my motion. I guess maybe, yeah, go ahead.
Right, right now, Tom, is, it needs to, my recommendation would be is to bring it back at the first meeting in June for discussion, because before you can refer it, put it on a, on a ballot, it has to be complete and ready to put on a ballot. Right now, you, the revenue purpose statement and the ordinance are both incomplete. So, my thought would be, you've made your intentions and your desire known for a public vote, and we take that into consideration, but the time to refer it for the council to put it on the ballot is not until the ordinance and revenue purpose statement are complete.
Yeah, and I, and I understand, I think, thanks for bringing that up, Sam. What I would, though, what I think what is pertinent today is that if we are looking at putting it on the November ballot, what's the timeframe for us to have it, have it out? What is, what are the other dates that are pertinent in the process that we know when our work needs to be finished and when things need to be out?
It needs to be completely finished into the auditor's office by September 20.
Okay, but that would entail three readings?
My recommendation, I'm sorry, you're wrong.
Don't, you go ahead.
My recommendation is that you determine the revenue purpose statement on, at the first meeting in June, which I believe is June 5. Am I correct? First one's, first one is June 5, and you set the hearing for June 19 and first reading, and then you do second reading, and then you do third reading, and at third reading, you put it on the ballot, because that gives an opportunity for you to continue the education process. I think people appreciate the fact that it's not being rushed, at no point has this been a rushed process. It allows for that discussion to continue, and then when you get the third reading, then when it's ready to go, then you direct to put it on the ballot.
Yeah, okay.
We can do all of that if we start on June 5.
That was the schedule structure I was hoping you'd lay out for us on that, so I appreciate that. And yes, June 5 is our first meeting, our first council meeting, so. So I'll, let's, I guess my motion still stands for, to bring it up on June 5. And I think the second stands with that, too, I would guess, and so.
Okay, so we have a motion and support. Everyone understands the motion at this point? Any further comments? All right, then we'll take a roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. All right, moving forward, update on the HC Lane building.
Is that you? I can, I can start the process and then turn it over to Rod. Rod and I visited this afternoon. I understand he's going to request a delay. I do support a delay of a few more weeks or a month, given the rain that we've had. It would be great, though, if we can firm up the dates, so we can avoid an alley closure too far into June. Thank you, Rod.
All right, can you give us an update, please? Where are things are at?
Pardon me?
Where are things at now?
We'll start with an email from Wayne Slofeld. "Since you contacted me late last week," that was Thursday morning at 5 minutes to 8 after the last city council meeting, just so you know, I acted as soon as I could. "To review the temporary measures that Kevin put in place and to monitor the wall for signs of additional cracking from his modification. I measured the existing wall cracks Friday, Saturday, Monday, and Tuesday. Based on that information, it appears the wall is stable with no additional crack propagation or change in condition. Unless there are additional problems that develop prior to the reconstruction being done, the wall should be adequate as braced. The permanent reconstruction of the wall will require additional bracing, including the use of beams for the floor and wall support, as I discussed with Kevin. I would recommend that permanent repairs take place as soon as possible. I would like to have the work done within two weeks," which isn't going to happen. We'll get to that later. "And that afternoon at 4:11, I got an email from the city manager, saying, 'Dear Rod and Danny, I received the email shown below from Wayne Slofeld. We appreciate the update on the HC Lane situation, and we would like to see the alley reopened sooner rather than later. However, per the city's interpretation of Wayne Slofeld's email, it does not seem he is prepared to unequivocally state that the temporary bracing is sufficient to justify the reopening of the alley. Wayne Slofeld noted in his email that the permanent repairs should be completed within two weeks. Per the council's previous direction, the city will need an unequivocal statement from Mr. Slofeld with his signature that the alley can be reopened. It makes more sense to simply complete the permanent repairs ASAP, and then reopen the alley when the repair has been approved by Wayne Slofeld.'" First of all, he would like it done in two weeks, doesn't say it has to be. In the city manager's email, he said, "should be," and there is a difference between would like and should be. So where are we standing? The wall is braced, it was done according to what his guidelines, and from last week's, the last city manager's meeting, or the city council's meeting, it was, the big effort was to get it so we could open the alley. I thought with the first Slofeld email, that was going to happen. And then... Hang on a minute here. Okay, quit it. It says, "I learned that the city," in the statement, in the email, "is considered to be the city manager, the city attorney, and Mr. Yule." So I don't care. You want to leave the alley closed, that's fine. I can tell you the beams have been ordered. When they get here, I don't know. I don't know how long that takes. I didn't order them. Kevin did. And when they get here, they'll go to work, but they can't go to work before they get here. Do I feel there's any possibility that that wall will crumble? No, I don't. It's west 8 feet, which is originally, appears to have been an alley, and there's a load-bearing wall 13 feet apart. One here, one here, and then on the other side of the building, of course. And this appears to be an afterthought, oh, we should fill this in now. It does have a wood door in there, and I don't think it's going to be as big a deal as everybody's making it, but it'll be fixed, and it'll be fixed ASAP, but I don't know that figure, and if it can be done in a week, or I mean, in a month, you would hope, but I don't know, this week shot, next week doesn't look really good either, so if you can control the weather, maybe we can do something, but it's, yeah. We're going to need at least a month. I would probably like a little more time, and whether you leave the alley closed or open, doesn't make any difference to me, but everybody else in town that uses that alley for unloading product, it's an inconvenience, and I understand that. So, the decision is city council's decision, and it doesn't, it really doesn't have any effect on me, what, with what we're doing. But it'll be done as soon as possible, that's all we can say. Questions?
But your engineer also says in an email, "I would rather err on the side of caution and keep the alley closed for now." Wayne Slofeld.
Okay, I've been brought up in a home that said, "If you can't say something good about somebody, don't say anything." Okay? So don't...
What did I say bad?
What?
What did I say bad about you?
Not you. I'm saying, right now, I don't know what the conversation was between the city manager, city attorney, and Todd Yule, and Wayne Slofeld, to make him change that statement.
This, this is an email?
His first statement.
Rod, I'm talking.
Okay.
This is an email from Wayne, to Sam, to Rod, to Danny, to Micah, to Todd. And in the bottom sentence, it says, "I would prefer, rather err on the side of caution."
What does it say up in the front part, top?
I'm talking, Rod. Let me finish.
Okay, Bradley. Councilman?
I'm done.
I have it.
All right.
I'm done. I make the motion that we continue on the path we are, keep the alley closed, do not grant him another 30 days. Let's get this ball rolling, because all it is is going to be a stall, stall, stall.
We have 90.
All right, let's work this out together. We, we don't want to be ambiguous, we don't want to be on opposite side.
If we don't hold them too accountable, it's not going to get done.
It will.
This didn't happen overnight. This has been going on for years. Let's get it fixed. It's not the city's fault, it's not the citizens of Sheldon's fault, it's Rod Funkert's fault. You manage the building, Rod, and the owner's issues. Let's get it fixed.
Been told that the beams are ordered, and a month's time, given the weather, it could be done. That thing, perhaps, we don't know, but we don't want it to be, like Brad said, we don't want it stretched out, and you're working on it, and I appreciate that, so keep us posted, and...
It's a done deal, it's not, that's not a problem.
Yes, so the sooner they're done...
But I can't control when that truck comes with the beam, I can't control L&amp;K, they're going to get right on it, but if they're in the middle of the project, guess what? They're going to have to wait that, till that gets done, which won't be more than a week or something, once the beams are here.
Have we gotten any complaints with the alley being closed? I mean, how much of an inconvenience is it right now? We have gotten complaints. Okay.
Yes, I have.
So, we're trying to work with both sides, keep everybody happy, and that is an impossible task sometimes, but we appreciate your efforts, and, you know, as far as L&amp;K is concerned, if you, you know, they know, they make sure they know that this is a hyperorder.
Oh, very well. No. No. That's their business. They ordered it. Yeah, your government. It's different.
It's different.
Different.
Yeah, interesting.
It's different.
Interesting, because I can get delivery days, too, Todd.
Mayor, my, my recommendation, unless directed otherwise, this would be on the May 15 agenda.
But I did make a motion that we do not, we keep the alley closed, and we do not extend him an extra 30 days. I made that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Let's deal with that first.
Just for clarification, the agreement at this point is that they had 90 days to finish the work, is that correct?
I'd have to look at the exact language of the notice, but the statute, the city code, does provide for a 90-day window.
Okay.
That would be for the completion of the alleged nuisance and dangerous building situation.
Okay. So if, if that was the assumption, since probably there was no other motion to go against that, Micah?
Yeah, there was a...
What would that, where would that 90 days fall out at? What would the date?
90 days from date of service, which, again, I don't have that exact date with me, but I assume it's in your packet somewhere. It was a two-part notice. The first part had to do with the initial securing of the building, and the second part was final completion.
Yeah, and I was assuming that the 90 days had to do with the final completion? That's what I'm checking on here, trying to get some feedback on.
The alley...
Yeah, I know that we had our own timeframe on the closure of the, of that. I'm just wondering.
I'm sorry. I have a half a bladder, and the half is full, so I need to excuse myself for just a minute.
All right. Reason I'm asking the question is, is that if they got 90 days by statute, I'm not sure an extension is even...
April 9 is when they sent the letter on Micah's letter.
Is that right, Brad?
What's that?
April 9.
April 9 is a letter from Micah's office to Rod and Lane.
So then 90 days would take us to July 9.
Yeah, but there is a nuisance letter. It says, "You have until 4:30 PM on April 17 to make all repairs that are necessary to allow the alley adjacent to the property to be safely reopened by the city council or the city of Sheldon, the city council of the city of Sheldon, excuse me. The aforementioned repairs shall commence within 48 hours of the date of this notice. Furthermore, you have until the 90th day following the date of this notice..." Where is that? I don't see it on here right now, but April 9, or whatever it is. You have until, you have until the 9th day following that date of the notice to fully abate the notices. "The building should not be reoccupied until the required repairs, improvements are completed, inspected, and approved by the city manager of the Shell, city of Sheldon, Iowa, or his designee." So...
So do we have two things going on here?
Well, we do, and it's debatable, what are the repairs, they're talking about the repairs necessary. I think you've done what Wayne recommended. The fire, he's still erring on the side of caution, and I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I wouldn't want to stick my neck out too far either. We're going out, I mean, he's, because then it's all going to come on him, and that's the biggest thing, is who's going to, you know, the possibility of happening is slim and remote, probably. But if it does, there's going to be a lot of finger pointing going on, and more so than that, even finger pointing, I would guess. So...
So what are we looking at here, April 9 plus 90 days?
It's either July 9 or July 17. That's 90 days, give or take a few days, from either Micah's letter, or from when we ordered the alley closed.
Okay.
It's from the date of service, and that's for final completion. Sorry. That, that's what I would call the phase two being total completion. Mayor Gils has made a valid point in that it was included in order to do two things, and the first phase, if you will, was to get the April 17 to allow the alley to be reopened. So, the council has the option before it to say, "We're going to extend that particular deadline," or whatever reason, or the council could direct me, a city attorney, to say, "Phase 1 has not been complied with appropriately, and therefore, take steps permitted under the Iowa code and city code to move forward with a municipal of the council's prior arrangement," which would require filing a municipal infraction, again, providing notice, an initial appearance, and setting a hearing.
In the email from Wayne Slofeld, where he says, "I would rather err on the side of caution," he also says, "The placing of material to stabilize the wall is adequate in light of the fact your contractor began his work, but it's, it still does not reestablish adequate wall strength where it is currently damaged. It is simply stated as is." And then goes on to say, "I would rather err on the side of caution and keep those for now." So, if I might? Yes.
The way I understand is Brad's motion is to, is to proceed with the filing of the municipal infraction, which takes some time, and then this will be on the May 15 agenda for further discussion. Brad, did I properly interpret your motion?
I made the motion to keep the alley closed, and not to grant him the... I made the motion to keep the alley closed and not to grant him the 30-day extension.
And to continue on the path that we're on.
And to continue on the path of, of the...
And to clarify, Brad, do you see a 30-day, are we talking about a 30-day extension?
He wanted another 30-day notice here in the beginning of the email. He wanted another 30-day extension. Where did I read that? Was that in?
It's at the beginning.
Rod, what do you want a 30-day extension for? What do you want a 30-day extension for? So, the, so the 30-days extension would take the project to completion?
Hopefully, yes. But what's the weather do?
Right, right.
That's the only thing. Yeah, I would think we can get it done in 30 days, but I don't know that to be absolute fact. And if we can't, then we'll have to come back and say, "Hey, this has happened."
I, I think we're, I think we're all in agreement, you as well, Rod, tell me if I'm wrong, that we want to get it fixed, and we want to get it fixed in a timely manner. And from what I'm hearing from you, you've got the contractor on point. He's got product already ordered, and it's on its way. And you have him scheduled to do the work as soon as the product arrives, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as they're not, I mean, right now, this week, they were siding a house.
Correct.
They need to finish siding.
I, I think what would help the council, Rod, and if you'd be willing to work with your contractor, to give us an approximate timetable of what that looks like. I think that would help. Then I think we can get away from speculation and get back to what, where our intent is again, and then we, then, then we know what we're looking at. So if you'd be willing to do that, I think that would help. And can you, could you get that to the city managers as soon as possible? With that, Brad, until we get that, would you be willing to table your motion until we get that?
I, you have two conversations going on.
Okay.
So what?
What I'd asked Rod to do was to...
I heard that part, but then I, you asked me a question, and...
Yeah. What I'm wondering is, is with that, if we get that, would you be willing to hold off on your motion until we understand what that looks like? Because it could very well be that, that timetable that the contractor gives us is within, in a reasonable, within those 30 days. We wouldn't even need it, so...
I still recommend the alley to be closed.
Oh, I, I agree with that.
Because his engineer isn't signing off on it.
I agree with that, no problem. But I guess what I'm saying is the extension part of it, so we just don't...
I would have to think hard, because I think it's just gonna be another song and dance down the road.
Yeah, and I, I honor that too, and that's why I'm asking Rod to follow through on this, because...
I can't come...
That's a step of good faith towards that.
Whenever the council wanted that bracing of the wall, it was done within days.
I think it'd just help if we have from your contractor what he expects finished date.
I can...
All right.
Yeah.
So, proper procedure. We have the motion on the floor. Are you going to let that motion stand? I mean, we can let it run its course if you want to do that.
That's fine, let it run its course. If it dies a lack of second, that's fine.
Is there support for that motion?
Hearing non-motion is not...
The motion dies.
It's my understanding that the status right now is that the alley is closed.
Yes.
And it's my understanding that it won't be open until we get something from Schlofeld Engineering that says that that's, in their mind, acceptable. So, I'm fine with where we're at. It behooves them to move this thing along as quickly as they can. It would really be helpful if we could get some kind of an update on some potentially ship dates of things, and something from the contractor that when they, when they may be able to get to it, it would certainly help us to make some decisions. Right now, we're trying to make decisions without any information, and that's very difficult.
So I'm going to ask Rod that we, within the two weeks, by the next council meeting, we have that schedule in front of us.
You'll have it tomorrow?
Great, better yet. And I think we need to try and work together on this as much as possible. We don't want the animosity, it's not gonna work, that's not gonna solve anything, and we need to work together. We want to help you in any way that we can, but we want it done at the same time, so, yeah.
Not a problem.
So the alley stays closed for now, and we'll move forward, and hopefully it gets taken care of soon.
John, thanks for the updates. Looking forward to more.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Just so we're on the same page, Mayor, so I will have this on the May 15 agenda.
Yes.
Ms. Clerk, could you also have the minutes reflect that no action was taken on the request by Rod Funkert for an extension?
Yep.
So, the status quo as, as to completion deadlines?
Just, just so I'm clear, as long as the alley stays closed, the, the phase of parking lot as well, is that what you assume?
I would say yes. Is that an issue?
I'm not saying it's an issue or not. I just wanted to make sure that that's the plan.
Yeah.
Again, it's an inconvenience for everybody.
It's an inconvenience. It's part of the complaint system, but...
Well, yeah, the whole thing is an inconvenience, but we can't do anything about that.
All right, let's move on. Move on to new business regarding the maintainer contract for development and minimum assessment agreement.
You can open the public hearing. Need a motion to pause it.
All right. So we'll open the public hearing on that, on that contract. Are there any public comments? Have we had any other context?
Not for me.
Okay. Hearing non-interruption, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
All right. Then we will move forward and consider the resolution approving and adopting a revenue purpose statement.
Hold on.
No.
We're on fire.
Oh, I missed something on the line. Consideration of the contract and agreement. Here we go. All right. Uh, here's the background on this. "The council authorized the drafting of the TIF incentive agreement on February 6 to support Maintainer's $1.7 million expansion project on South Second Avenue. On April 17, the council approved set in the hearing for May 1. The estimate is given, the, the estimate is given the current consolidated levy rate and rollback percentage. The total tax increments from the minimum improvements will not exceed $90,366. Maintainer is also being asked to sign a minimum assessment agreement." Who's, where's Kurt? Oh, okay, Kurt. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Kurt?
Not really. We do have the executed signatures from the maintainer officials. They did execute those and provided those to staff. Maintainer did conduct the groundbreaking ceremony yesterday, and made a good representation there. So it was a good project to announce publicly. So, pretty standard practice of what you guys are considering there as far as the minimum assessment agreement contract development.
Okay.
And just so everyone's aware, upon council approval, we have maintainer signature. The next step would be to obtain the county assessor's signature and approval of the minimum assessment agreement, which, don't anticipate issues, but that does have to be done before everything is finalized.
Okay. And that's your job, or that's Sam's job?
That's my job.
Okay.
Sam does almost everything else, but I gotta do something once in a while.
All right, great. Uh, so then we need a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract and the agreement. Support.
Sorry, who was that? Was that Tom?
Yeah, Brad motion.
That's me over here.
And that is subject to the assessor?
Yeah, you don't have to approve it subject to that. You just need to know that that's the procedure.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
All right, motion carried. All right. Then the date will be, the date, setting the date in time for budget amendment?
May 15.
Okay. We'd like to set the, uh, date of May 15 for year 1819, 2018, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
All right, and the plat of Crossroads North, that would also be May 15.
Yes, sir.
Motion, motion for that, please.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Kent.
Hi.
Hamel. Brewster.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
All right, moving on. In your packets, we had a resignation letter from Officer Scott Degui. Is he here today? Did you see him? No. Uh, who has served since 1987, I believe, 32 years. Uh, we need a motion to accept that resignation.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Do I have a question? How soon, Sam, will they start looking for his replacement?
While Chief Balkan was unable to attend the meeting tonight, but we hope to get it posted within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, that'd be good.
Okay. Other question along those, Sam just came on board. Are they eligible for this position?
They are.
Okay.
The reason I'm asking that is because that reserve took a long time to get that process going, so I want that moving faster.
Okay.
Okay. All right, let's move on to license for Brady's Pub on May 11, 2019.
You got permission to the agenda, and we did not put, I did not put on consent because it wasn't ready for that, and we wanted, the initial rec, the initial was to operate until 1:00 AM in the parking lot. That has been allowed before when it was with Schlotzies, Schlotzskis?
Schotzskis.
Schotzskis. There's a, sorry, there's a Schlotzskis in Rapid City, so...
Don't pretend you haven't been there.
Yeah. Anyway, uh, it was, yes. So it was allowed until 1:00 AM by the council in the past, and they found, found the minutes from August 17 of 2016 where it was allowed, noting that the band must notify the area property owners. However, in city ordinance, it says, "An outdoor sound system may not operate in any place in the city at any time during the hours of midnight to 7:00 AM." So, as I see it, you have a couple of options. You can do, you can do it, authorize it ending at midnight, if you want. You can authorize ending at 1:00 AM, which you, which has been done before, and look the other way on enforcement. It is best so, if you want to do that, change your ordinance, because the ordinance, in my opinion, is fairly clear. So, Brady and I have, have visited, and understandably, he would, he would prefer to go to 1:00 AM. The minutes of the past indicate that there have been complaints.
Sam, if you would, could you read the part about the, the neighbors have to be informed, or I don't understand that?
The minutes of August 17, 2016 state.
Right.
It was on consent, and it said, "Approval of special outdoor permit for Schotzies Bar and Grill on September 3, 2016, noting the band must stop playing at 1:00 AM, and the owners to notify the area property owners."
Okay. So did, do we know whether the local property owners were notified at, on that occasion?
I do not, but it does sound like there were complaints to council members after the event.
Right, so, I guess that's kind of the key point in my mind, is you want to be a good neighbor here.
Right.
For the record, Brady, before you start, just aim, because this is going on, you'll be on YouTube, and everyone wants to know who you are.
All right. My name's Brady Danartog. I'm Brady's. I do know that the previous owner did send out, not necessarily send out, but they were just like little note cards informing the neighbors that there was going to be a band. He put them in all of their mailboxes, I believe, from the railroad tracks all the way to 16th Street, basically behind the bar, and anybody kind of in that area. And I, as far as I know, he did do that, but I, that's his word, you know what I mean? So...
So if that was to be a requirement for, for adoption here, what would be your approach towards that?
Basically, whatever, if, if that works, I would be willing to do something like that along those lines, or, I guess personally, I'll knock on everybody's door if I have to. I guess I don't know how to approach that.
Okay. That's one reason I'm a little concerned about changing the ordinance, is that, once in a while, once in a while it might work out, but a steady diet of it may not be the right decision, if you know what I mean, so... You know, I, I think you're wanting to run a successful business, and that's why you want to do this.
Yes, sir.
But I think you really want to cover it with your neighbors, because they're gonna be, in the end, your success.
Absolutely.
So, uh, I'd kind of like to have your assurances that you're gonna do the utmost to be a good neighbor in that process.
Right. So, you know, if you guys do grant me that 1 o'clock, you know, what, if I do give like little note cards or what have you to the neighbors or the surrounding area, should I put like a phone number on there, so that way if they have any concerns, they can call me, or how would I go about that? Or would they just call the city and complain? I don't, I mean, I'm sure that's not something you guys need either.
That's a fair question.
I know from early on, when, I think the first time Randy wanted to do this, there were concerns expressed.
Okay.
And there were steps taken, notification being one, position of the stage, so that the speakers are blowing to the west rather than to the east.
Okay.
And I have, I have personally not gotten complaints since then, as a councilman. I don't know if anybody else has. But it was, I think the initial one, there was concerns, and...
Okay.
Could we address those? And I, it's, I'm not aware of any complaints since then, so if you take those steps, work with the neighbors, make sure they're aware of it.
Yeah.
That was a band, not a DJ, right?
Right.
Yes.
Uh, this is more of a DJ, so I'm guessing it'll be a little quieter than a band, and...
And that would be good to communicate in that note as well.
Right.
Just to put them at ease a little more.
That and it, it's not, it wouldn't be a problem to set them up to the west, because we have, there is a permanent privacy fence on the backside of my parking lot, and then in the, on the south side, there's a big shed that pretty much cuts that off. So I could always set them up against that fence facing the west.
Okay, that would be good.
This, uh, event, is it anything special, or just?
It's not necessarily anything special. Amanda Boone and Robert, I forget his last name, they get married on May 11, and they're getting married at the Eagles, and then their wedding party and family are coming down to my bar, and the DJ that's doing their wedding is following them down there. So, we were talking about a weather permitting having it outdoors, so that's why we're kind of trying... of trying to do that.
Any other questions? So I think we should have a motion, perhaps, addressing how we want to handle this, how we want Brady to handle this.
Yeah, I guess I'd make a motion that we grant him his request to play until 1:00 AM, as long as he follows through with the neighbors and, and works with them to...
I would second that.
Further discussion? In terms of the ordinance, is there anything preventing it? What is this?
The ordinance is 12.
Yeah, but if we have a, I mean, a unanimous vote of the council?
The majority rule is that a certain type of legislation, this being an ordinance, requires like legislation to suspend or amend it, which would require an ordinance, right? That's the majority rule. There is not specific Iowa case law addressing whether they would file the majority rule or the minority rule. Minority rule being that the body, the city council, can nonetheless suspend a ordinance via a resolution motion or lesser type of legislation. That's the direction I give you.
Okay. So are we filling the minimum requirements with this motion?
Well, your motion basically is a one-time amendment or suspension, if you will, of City Code 40.06.
Okay, that's what I want to...
From my enforcement standpoint, the safest approach is to stick with the ordinance, but the ordinance has been suspended in the past, either intentionally or otherwise.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and support. Any other comments?
Is it implied there that the, someone doesn't even need the permission to run till midnight, correct?
40.06 is a, has more to do with what, how you could be penalized for a violation.
Is there anything with an outdoor liquor license?
Yeah.
That's actually what you're considering, is a special outdoor liquor license.
Because of the liquor license, right. So I'm fine, didn't mean to complicate it.
But, yeah, if the motion passes, you're basically sending the message to Chief Balkma and his staff that you've given a thumbs up to this activity for that one-hour timeframe.
Okay.
All right. Let's take a roll call then, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
I do have one other question. What, do you guys have a recommendation on how far I should go out to notify my neighbors? I mean, I know what he did in the past, I don't know if you guys have a, an idea of how, what, you know, if there's a block radius I should do, or...
There's really no residences north of the railroad tracks, correct, that I'm aware of?
Uh, no.
It's basically everything south. There's, I think the railroad tracks to 16th Street.
There's one across from Beverly Park.
Yeah.
Just that one house, I think.
And then the Third Avenue houses, I would obviously inform.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if I needed to go, is there, do I need to go to the block behind Third Avenue, Island?
I would say no at this point.
Okay, so basically railroad tracks, Third Avenue, and then, yeah, that'd be about it. I don't think there's, well, you got the trailer court next door, kind of.
Yeah.
All those guys.
Just for clarification, the houses behind him on Island Avenue are a heck of a lot closer to him than the houses clear up by the railroad tracks on South Third. If you're going to make him notify, railroad tracks to 16th Street, Island Avenue to Railroad Avenue, because he points in that direction, too, and there are 451, Railroad Avenue, South Track, oh, sound carries a long ways.
Okay.
Sounds good to me, Todd.
Yep. All right, guys. That's his recommendation, I'll go with that.
All right.
Hey, guys. That's all right. At least now I know what I'm doing.
All right, thank you, Brady.
Thanks for coming.
All right, moving on to report, city manager report. Anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
All right. Council comments to the left. Tom? All right. I have just one thing I'd like to make everyone aware of. The mayor's prayer practice tomorrow morning, bright and early, 6 o'clock, Living Waters Church, perhaps. You're supposed to RSVP, if you'd like to come, I'm sure we can squeeze you in yet. That's all I have. So, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Right?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, moving on. In your packets, we had a resignation letter from Officer Scott Degui.